2021. The first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which includes five items. Approval of the minutes of the 4821 meeting. Action on easement to WPS Corporation for burying electrical and electrical conductors to serve the wastewater treatment facility. Action on a preliminary resolution to vacate and discontinue an unpaved alley abutting 205 and 209 to 211 Short Street and 1202, 1210 and 1212 North Third Street. And action on a stormwater agreement with Westside Real Estate LLC at 7333 Stewart Avenue. And action on a temporary access agreement with WPS Corp. at 112 East Wassa Avenue. Does anyone want to consider any of those items individually? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Neil, is there a second? Second by Wadinsky, further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So record one opposed to the consent agenda?
No, it's a aye.
Oh, you're an aye, okay. All right, so that item then will pass five to zero. Item number two is 12th Avenue Sidewalk Project, discuss public hearing results and make recommendation. As you know, a public hearing was held for this project. This is a sidewalk that runs between Randolph Street and Merrill Avenue alongside of the Urban West apartment complex. I believe in our packets, we have received a letter from the owner of the Urban West apartment complex. And let me see here. Any staff report on this item, anything you guys want to walk us through? It didn't sound like there was a robust attendance at your public hearing. I will say that this property lies in District 7, and I've had massive, massive requests for sidewalk in that block because that gives you then a contiguous sidewalk between Merrill Avenue, Randolph Street, and 12th Avenue. Nearly every resident of the Village Cooperative petitioned for this sidewalk a couple of years ago, and they all walk. And so, you know, just because the developer who developed Urban West, you know, feels that they don't want to pay for or maintain a sidewalk, it is a plus for the neighborhood to have that sidewalk because that's also an important linkage between West High School and Merrill Avenue. And there is a lot of foot traffic between there now with kids walking to lunch since they opened up Subway and Bricks up there. There's a decent amount of pedestrian thoroughfare. And I will say that before Urban West was built, the board of the Village Cooperative and I held an in-person meeting at the Village Co-op with SC Swiderski's representatives at the time. And at that time, it was to address concerns from the Village Co-op about the various design considerations with that building going in. They were told then that the residents at the village and the neighborhood wanted a sidewalk through there. And so they've had a number of years to adjust to the idea that there would be one. And so, based on the feedback I've received, I intend to support the sidewalk in the area. Any additional comments from the committee?
Yes.
Go ahead, Lou.
Is there a sidewalk across the street?
No. 12th Avenue had none.
So there is no sidewalk across the street where the existing homes were?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No. Deb, go ahead.
Thank you, Lisa. It just happens where I live on the west side on Elm and 7th that I quite often take Elm down to 17th Avenue and go that way to go over to, towards the technical college or towards Merrill Avenue at different times and occasionally in the evenings. On the one side is kind of homes that have no sidewalk and have driveway and I believe the mailbox are like rural mailboxes on their side. And then Urban West has been built. And across the street on the south side of Randolph is, is part of the baseball fields and the complex for West High, I believe. So I have seen occasionally people walking in the street. Sometimes they're walking in the middle of the street. But this is an area where they're either going to Subway or to Bricks. And I think there was an incident in the last six months or something of someone having some issue with the police after dark in this area. And it is extremely dark. So I am going to support the sidewalk. I just think it's something with that location and encouraging people to be using the different baseball parks or going to the track and that at West High in an area that you would expect that there would be sidewalks. And it does seem that they're, they're quite close. The building is quite close to where the sidewalks will be. But it just seems the way the other homes that have been there, I would think quite a few of them are 30 years old or older, that it would just be easier to just go ahead and put it on the Urban West side. And we just, for safety reasons, need, need to proceed with a sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I, I agree with that. The lack of sidewalk there has been problematic as Urban West fills up. It's over half full now with my, based on my understanding. But I also believe there's a second building planned for that site at some point to the south. The traffic flow in that area will only go up because everyone that moves in brings a car. And so between that, you know, I anticipate added conflict between bikes, pedestrians, and cars if that second building fills up as well. So I think giving people a safe place to walk is, is paramount for the neighborhood. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the sidewalk on 12th Ave? Motion by Neil, is there a second? Second by Ryan, further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is discussion and possible action on a stormwater easement with Edifex Builds Incorporated at 201 and 205 Short Street and 1201 North 2nd Street and 1204 North Third Street. Let me catch the packet up to hear where we're at. And who has this? Is this an Allen item? I think it is. Do you have anything you want to walk us through on this one, Allen? This, okay, and so this one is, let me switch to that. Got it, right here.
I guess I could just say it's, the storm sewer is existing. So when we sell the parcels to the developer, we want to have easement over the top of it so we can maintain it in the future.
To get at them, sure.
Just gives us that, so when they sell the property, we'll retain that easement.
Makes sense. Is there any question from the committee? If not, is there a motion to approve the easement? Motion by Wadinsky, is there a second? Second by Neil. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number four is discussion and possible action on 72nd Avenue Business Campus Trail Memorandum of Agreement with WISDOT. TJ has this item, come on up.
As you guys are aware, we're in the midst of designing a trail that's going along 72nd Avenue. And that also goes underneath the interchange of 29, which is WISDOT's right-of-way. So we need a maintenance agreement to maintain the trail through that right-of-way. And this is just a maintenance agreement describing the responsibilities of us and WISDOT for that trail.
Okay. Committee members, any questions for TJ? Go ahead, Lou.
I have a question. I drive this area every day and I see, what I see is I don't see a lot of people walking this street here. What I do see is I see a lot of people walking, I don't know what the, is that the name of that street is that goes, that's just north of International Drive?
I think it's Stewart.
No, 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 not Stewart.
Or International, you said?
It's just north of International where, where, where East Bay has their warehouse. And Graphic Packaging has their house and then has their place. There's a circle down there that comes out towards International. I see a lot of people walking that. And I would someday like to see, you know, a sidewalk. I think the priority would, if it were me, the priority would be there.
We do have a, a trail master plan for this business campus. And this is the trail that got funded first through WISDOT, so it's just the first section that's going to be.
I, I drive this area specifically at noon hour and, and any given day, there's at least a half a dozen, eight, 10 people walking this, this street. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I agree. It's become more walkable because I think a lot of the businesses in the area are promoting worker wellness and people are walking on lunch hours and that. And there's been a decent amount of conflict between, you know, truck traffic and vehicular traffic and pedestrians. Also in the past, we've heard feedback from the Morgan Creek subdivision that they are also wanting to walk and bike in that area as well. And they appreciate the fact that we're working on some trails through there to keep them off the road. With that, is there a motion from the committee to approve the memorandum of agreement? Motion by Larson, is there a second? Second by Wadinsky, further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is discussion and possible action on parking restrictions on the south side of West Wassa Avenue from First Avenue to Cherry Street. Now, this must be the night for us to talk about issues in District 7. I have, I'm glad we have this one because I've received a number of calls from UMR about some disruption to access to their building because vehicles are stacking in this area in question. Go ahead, Allen.
So, right, so Corde and I started looking at this because of that complaint from UMR and, and the truck, truck stacking on, if you look at the picture that was enclosed, it's West Wassa from First to Cherry. And the, this, this section is the main entrance for UMR. They have their big parking lot to the north. A lot of the, a lot of the office staff, including the, the president and the approach from this side of the building. So when we were looking at it, I guess this is kind of the first step. We don't, I don't know if we have an overall solution to the, to the truck parking yet. We're going to be working on that. But when we were looking at the ordinances, and you can see the second picture shows the no parking and the 15-minute loading. None of, none of those restrictions are in the current ordinance. So if someone were to park on the south side of the road in front of UMR, and it wouldn't be enforceable because it's not in the ordinance. So that's, that's kind of what we found out. The, the north side of the road, between, it is in the ordinance, that's, that's marked no parking, so that's fine. But for some reason, the south side, just the signs just got put up and it was never got put into ordinance. So I've since met with UMR and the property management out there. They want to, to maintain the no parking on the south side. They, the 15-minute loading zone that you see there is towards, it's just as you turn the corner off of First Ave, they don't want it there. They want it about mid-block in front of their entrance. So my recommendation after meeting with UMR would be to, they wanted two 15-minute parking zones, so I guess my recommendation would be to keep the no parking on the south side of West Wassa Avenue between First Avenue and Cherry Street with the exception of the, the two 15-minute parking stalls.
So the 15-minute truck loading zone, is that, can't be for the benefit of UMR though, or is that for supplies being delivered?
It will not say truck loading zone, it'll just say two 15-minute parking stalls.
Okay. Because when I had talked to them originally, part of the issue was semi-truck traffic to the plant behind them. And those vehicles actually are supposed to make entry to the plant off of Bridge Street, but there's a fair amount of confusion with out-of-town truck drivers and GPS communications and whatnot that brings them in this way. And we had talked about the fact that if there is a need or becomes a need to stack vehicles in this area behind the plant, that the neighborhood would like them stacking on Cherry and not on, on West Wassa.
Right, I, I think that's going to have to be an issue we're, we're going to look at a little further. There are, there are some issues with that, too. One thing we, when this does get, if it does get re-signed, I did notice too that the semis, when they do pull in, they, they park across the crosswalk on the, on the east end, too. So we're going to mark that crosswalk with pedestrian crossing signs and also put no blocking the crosswalk on the signs. I mean, that should be obvious, but sometimes it's not.
It should, and in concert with that, it would help if we would have a dialogue with the plant and advise them to communicate to their drivers and their vendors that those trucks should be making entry off of Bridge. That's more than enough space for them to get in and out there. I mean, once in a while, a person makes a mistake, but this seems pretty frequent.
Well, they don't, they, they don't, I, I mean, I talked with the plant manager and the facilities manager at Graphics. They, they tell their truck drivers to come in this way. They don't have access off of Bridge Street to get around the building. It's pretty tight to get around the building. So they do tell them to come in this way, and then they tell them to exit south. They come in on Wassa, and then I can't remember the streets to the south of their UMR building here, that, they exit that way.
I think that's Norton.
That's the way they're supposed to exit. So their loading docks are, their unloading docks are right behind, just off the picture here to the north. So I mean, it's, it's a complicated issue only because they're, they're stacked up in there and there's really not a lot. The Graphics Package building thing takes up a good majority of the, it's a huge building. They, they don't have a lot of area back there. And I did communicate to the plant manager, you know, maybe to, to tell their truck drivers not to stack on Wassa, but to stack on the Graphics Packaging Lot. But I guess their response was that it's so hard, there's different drivers every day. It's all over-the-road drivers, it's not independent drivers, it's not their drivers. So they have a hard time getting that word out to all these different drivers to not stack on, to not stack on West Wassa Avenue. The thought about moving it and stacking on Cherry, that's something I think we're considering. We might have to bring that back for some consideration.
They can go off a block to Union and come back down that way. They can turn right off of Union and come in on Cherry rather than if they're coming up first.
Right, that would be something we could look at, and no, Union is, there's residential properties on the north side, so now you're putting truck traffic through residential street, too, which could be problematic. I would agree stacking on Cherry Street would be a lot better than stacking on West Wassa. It's just a matter of do we want that truck traffic on Union where there's four residential properties on the north side.
Well, and the compounding factor is that none of these residential streets were built for semi-truck traffic on a consistent basis, so little by little, they'll ruin these streets. So, I mean, that's something also that we have to be prepared for, you know? So, but I think first, we need to solve the problem at UMR because they've actually had employees ducking between trucks to get to their vehicles, and that's just dangerous. So I think that we're off to a good start here, but I think that discussion should continue. Committee members, any questions for Allen on this one? If not, is there a motion to approve the parking restriction? Motion by Wadinsky, is there a second? Second by Larson, further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number six is discussion and possible action on a petition for street lighting at 5th Avenue between West Street and Garfield Avenue. In your packets, you have a copy of the petition that was received from the residents on 5th Avenue in the 6th and 700 block. These two blocks are currently under construction, and the residents have requested additional street lighting. And so having talked about this a little bit, one thing we look at when we design a street is we look at a number of things first. We look at safety, we look at lights, we look at tree canopy, we look at, you know, all of the factors to determine if the street is, you know, safe, is it bike and ped friendly? Is it, does it have proper visibility? Is there a way to mitigate the, the removal of mature trees? I mean, we look at all these things together. This particular street was designed nearly two years ago. And so one of the things that emerged is when we plan a street like that, when we add additional lighting, decorative lighting on any street costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have to budget for that and borrow for it ahead of time. And it takes quite a while to get those lights. So if a person wanted to install them, you'd have to plan for them with the design and then place the order. In fact, you'll recall that we even had trouble with, based on pandemic shipping issues and whatnot, getting lights for street projects last year in a timely manner. So knowing this, one of the things that I was just discussing with staff today was, is there a compromise solution that may help us manage, you know, some of the issues with darkness on 5th Avenue without looking to install decorative lighting? Because I think the ship has kind of sailed on the timeline for when we would even want to plan for that. And so the ask that I had today was, is there a mid-block Wisconsin Public Service Power Pole in this block or within these two blocks, a couple of them, that we could install an extra LED fixture upon? Because you know, when we install an LED fixture on those poles, they install them, they maintain them, and LED, they're brighter, they're safe, and they last a really long time. And they are not nearly as expensive as these decorative things that we've been putting around. And so it did, I guess I'll let Eric weigh in, but it does seem like that is an option for us to create a little safer environment there without installing, you know, decorative lighting. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, is there overhead, overhead power and lines on that street? Is there, you know?
No.
No? Okay. So we, we would have to have WPS come in and drop a pole and then if, if that were the case, and then try to get power to.
Right, and there'd be the, the cost for that. WPS would bill us for extending the.
Right.
Getting power to it, the new pole. We'd have to get that cost estimate for you.
Can we? Because it has to be an awful lot less than decorative.
We can, we can, we can ask for that estimate. There are lights now at the intersection, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Basically, there's lights at the intersection and there's no mid-block lighting there, which is kind of consistent with the policy that was set by this committee. When the blocks are a certain length that we don't, you know, when a request for a street light comes in, we base it on that criteria that was set, that if the block is really long or it's on a, it's on a curve or something, we can add a light without coming to committee. But, so that's why we, you know, didn't add any lights, but.
Right. One thing that, that I'll mention is that when we last looked at that criteria, that was really before we had undertaken a full-scale change to LED fixtures. We were still installing the, the old Cobra head fixtures, which were expensive to run. And, you know, then mid-block streetlights were largely resisted. I mean, I think that we had difficulty installing them, like Allen said, unless there was a, you know, curve in the road or unless there was a, you know, a longer-than-average block or something like that. Now that we have the ability to install and convert lighting to LED, the cost to run them and, and do that is less than it used to be. And so, you know, I think that in areas where there's mature tree canopy, sometimes that mid-block gets awfully dark. And so there, I think that it makes sense for us to consider, you know, I don't think that the answer to every mid-block light request should automatically be no, if we have the ability to use LED lighting on top of a power pole and not, you know, trench in 12 new decorative poles everywhere. You know, that said, as we start to make that transition, and we've talked with Pub Service about transitioning more of those old lights to LED, once we start to realize some of those efficiencies, and, you know, we've talked with Pub Service about when we have a street under construction, looking at a conversion, street by street, of lights from the old ones to the LED at that time, when everything is open, the streets open, all the conduits open, the, you know, sewer and water is getting done, that's the ideal time for us to try to capture a block or two at a clip to get this LED conversion, you know, give it a better push than trying to do it on a, in a spotty fashion where you catch one light here and one light there when they burn out. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But you know, I'm always pretty sensitive to requests from neighborhoods for lighting because generally when we have those requests, it's because it's a legitimate need, like it's, it's just too darn dark. Now, my first thought was, you know, are there mid-block, you know, WPS poles and can we, you know, that would be a, a great stopgapper. So it'd be interesting to know if that is doable or the costs associated with, you know, sending, you know, power over there. But I will also, you know, remind you that when we did the East Washington Road Project, I had requested the decorative lighting over there. But it wasn't budgeted. And, you know, we are strategically trying to employ the decorative lighting scheme sort of from a, you know, city center and, you know, gradually spreading out as we can. So at that time, I asked if we could at least put in the infrastructure for East Washington, whether it was conduit or, and bases or, you know, wiring or whatever, you know, to get it in the ground so that in a future budget, then we can like, all right, now let's, let's start, you know, that spread again incrementally. So is this something that we can look at on this stretch, too, to just while the work's going on, to lay that, that conduit and other infrastructure for possible future decor, decorative lighting?
Well, I would think it's probably true that the conduit that powers the power pole would also power that lighting. I mean, if you're putting in power to mid-block. But Allen, could you review with us just what the cost of decorative lighting is per pole? It's, it's a shocker.
It's about, if you want to look at the conduit and the base and the poles, about $5,000.
Per light.
Per light. So if we looked at these two blocks, you're probably eight, four aside, eight, 16, 16 lights in these two blocks times 5,000. Is that 80,000? For the decorative?
Yep. So, and that's, that, the other problem is, is that if, when those lights are knocked over, hit, whatever, they're really expensive to work on and replace. And so, you know, I think that we need to make sure that we have neighborhoods that are lit and properly lit and safe. But I think that we also have to keep an eye on costs because, you know, if we borrow, well, let's just say, $25,000 is one cent on the mill rate to every taxpayer in town. So $80,000, that's over three cents on the mill rate, just like that, not counting what it costs to run them. So, you know, I think that we have to be strategic in where we place those. And, you know, obviously, there's a place for them, but the core issue, if it's darkness and safety, if we can get there in a more economical way and reduce the cost of the streets, that helps as well. So Lou, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I looked through this and I just kind of wonder why, how decorative lights got included in here in the first place.
They weren't, that's the thing. We have a petition to put them in, but we did not budget for them.
I, I don't, I don't see anything on the petition here that says they need decorative lights. I mean, I'm all for making the, the, the city and the neighborhood safer, you know, and if, if we need to put an LED like, like you suggested, Madam Chair, but I honestly, I failed. And perhaps I'm wrong, perhaps I overlooked something here, but I didn't see anything in here requesting decorative lighting.
I, I don't know what the exact request is, it's not on, so maybe we could hear from.
The petition says the neighborhood of 5th Avenue between West and Garfield, they're requesting it be made safer with the addition of additional streetlights.
Right.
But that, the, the reference to decorative lighting comes in the staff memo, not in the petition. And, you know, I know that we may have thought about decorative lighting when we considered this petition because, you know, certain neighborhoods have obtained grant funding and whatnot to put them in themselves, like East Town puts some in, and I think the Longfellow Group has put some in, and I think Worley Park has had some. And, you know, but that said, I think if the concern from the neighborhood is really darkness and safety, I think there's a better way for us to get there. Go ahead, Deb.
Thank you, Lisa. No, I had a chance that my neighbors from, from south of Stewart Avenue in the Worley Park area, I had a chance to talk to them before the meeting. And yes, in their request, there says nothing about doing the decorative lighting, and I talked with a little bit about it. But it just seems as a good compromise. The road is, is dug up, was it six feet or more? Now is the time for, you know, WPS gas or electrical or, you know, cable of the water in the sewer to be in this big hole and put, and, and plop a new pole in. This is the perfect time to do it at mid-block. And I do think that they're, this is just a great time to do it and, and that they're not looking for the fancy, you know, retro street lamps. They're just looking for more light. So I don't, I don't think that's, I mean, I understand Allen covered it and to look at it potentially, but there has been a number of neighborhoods or even with Thomas Street, it's overhead. It, it wasn't the, the streetlights. And in past neighbors on, on East Scott Street, east of Red Eye, they asked to continue the same old retro streetlights, but it's not something they're asking for, they're just looking for more lights. So I would think this is pretty minimal compromise. And Allen, do you have any idea, just for a pole, I mean, are we talking like a thousand or 2,000, just a pole and then the wire?
It would depend on where WPS is coming from their power. I mean, they have it at each intersection. I did speak with Rick Pragalsky, our electrical inspector, and he, he didn't have an, it varies from WPS, how far they have to run it.
Right.
So.
I think that's what we ended up ultimately doing on Mortenson Drive in my district. We had to put one in on a corner, and they did that for us. And it was not some unbearable cost. It was, it was very reasonable considering what the other lights would be.
Right, I, I would imagine it's going to be several thousand dollars, but not, not this $80,000.
Right.
I did get one call from a, Tony Case, who is the owner of 626 South 5th Avenue, does not want lights, and she owns a mid-block home and she feels it'd be too bright. Um, does not want lights and she owns a mid-block home and she feels it'd be too bright for her tenants and that she would like to consider low-level lights. But I told her I would, she did call me and I told her I would pass that along for if she couldn't make the meeting, so.
You said she's at 626?
Correct.
So she's on the west side of the street?
So that was her concern. Now it'd be too bright if you're mid-block right in front of the lights.
Well, and that's, is she exactly mid-block? I mean, here's, here's the thought, I guess. If you have, you know, every neighbor on that side of the street that wants them, with the exception of one, could an adjustment be made that that mid-block light be slightly offset and be, you know, perhaps in front of one of the other homes and not directly in front of her home? You know, they don't have to be exactly at mid-block. I mean, if we could jump over one lot, um, you know, and that maybe is a shorter run of electricity to then for pub service.
Right. We, we could put it between homes so that it's not directly in front of one home.
Right.
But it might be directly across the street from a home on the other side. I don't know how that would lay out.
Okay.
We could, we could look at that.
I think we should look at that. Um, could you? And if it's not a, um, cost that would require some kind of a budget mod, can you guys just go ahead with it if the committee votes for it?
Wow, okay.
Okay.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just add to that.
No, go ahead.
You know, maybe get back to that neighbor and just talk about, uh, you know, the, the downward projecting lights now rather than the, you know, the omni-glowing types, which she might be afraid it's going to be a big glowing eye outside. But it's, it's really, you know, the light is just shedding downward, so.
Yep. The LEDs are, even in the box form though, are considerably brighter than the old ones. Um, go ahead, Jim.
I've got a question and a comment. The question is, I thought that we were told before that street lighting costs the same whether it's incandescent or their old-fashioned or LED. WPS charges us the same per light, per pole. Is that right? So, so a, 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 a light on a pole going LED does not save the city any money?
WPS is not giving us credit when they switch it to an LED, even though it's costing them less. They said it's really not worth looking at, so.
And that's probably set up if it burns out. It doesn't matter how long it lasts. They just replace it because they're probably billed that way.
They are.
It's a cost for the city to replace it or what we do is pay electric bill every, every month.
Right. They don't charge us to replace the lights when they go out. They just replace them. But they are replacing anything that burns out with LED instead of, you know, but it's a slow process. I mean, I don't know how many burn out a year, but.
So when we put in, when we take out like two or three of the overhead lights and put in eight or whatever of the low-profile decorative, do they charge us each light that way too with those lights or are those different billed?
Well, the decorative ones are owned by the city and we get metered from those separately and pay those bills separately. The, the ones on the wood poles at the intersection, we just pay a, a flat fee to WPS. When we put up the decorative ones, we have a separate meter and pay that meter charge every month.
So that pole lighting has got to be cheaper then?
So a couple decorative is going to be cheaper electric bill then? WPS is powerful on just because they're probably taking out the old, old rate?
I think the, the rate for electricity is not, I'd have to get Rick in here, what they charge us per pole, but.
Yeah, I don't know what they charge either, Jim. Um, you know, when we set up a meter and stuff, we get the meter charge too, you know, the flat rate plus the usage, but yeah, the LED usage is pretty low.
I guess my comment would be then, I, I, I'm not opposed to a mid-block light, but I wouldn't want to do it without knowing how much it's going to cost us. I mean, if it's a reasonable, a couple thousand dollars or whatever, that's reasonable. But if it's going to be 10,000, that's not reasonable.
What is?
And I'm all for a light way up high, 30 feet in the air that's illuminating the neighborhood really good, but I'm not for any decorative where you're going to put like First Avenue, 72 lights in five blocks. That's way too much money the city's spending it, you know.
Um, when is the estimated completion date on Fifth Ave? Is it, it's just getting underway, right? So, I mean, you could research this, report back to us at the June meeting and still get it done in time before the project's ready to wrap. Is that a reasonable timeframe?
It's going to go relatively quickly because it's only two blocks, so. But I mean, even if we have to put it in after the curb and gutter goes in, I mean, it's, it's a one conduit. It'd be behind the back of the curb. The restoration won't be done yet. But I mean, we can, we can work with WPS to, to see their timeframe, but I can't guarantee that if we come back next month that it won't, that we'd have time to get it in. I mean.
Go ahead, Tom.
I just want to make one editorial comment that, uh, you know, the, the city guidelines, you know, uh, cut it off at 600 feet, you know, and this is like exactly 600 feet. If it had been 602 feet, we wouldn't have to have this discussion, I guess. And when it gets that close, I mean, it is a very, uh, relevant discussion about need. So, yeah, I think it is sort of a priority.
Okay. Deb and then Lou and then Jim, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, as part of the, the digging up of the street, this is the perfect time to do the additional wiring and a trench, um, with conduit. I would think you're using conduit because of how deep you're going in that and safe, safe-wise. So even, even the cost of the pole and running the wire is pretty minimal, maybe 5% of the cost compared to decorative lights. So I think it's worthwhile to do and the street is being torn up, so it's the ideal time to add that wire and add that pole.
Okay. Lou?
I would support this.
Thank you. Jim?
I move we approve it.
Okay. Uh, move to approve, um, the installation of LED mid-block fixtures on WPS poles. Do we have a second? Second from Larson. Further discussion or questions? Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed. Motion carries. Um, item number seven is discussion on possible action on converting Washington Street from First Street to Fourth Street to two-way traffic and construction of a temporary road. And we've got TJ on that one.
All right. So in 2019, the city adopted the, uh, Wasna Center Urban Design and Transportation Master Plan. With that, um, there are several recommendations made, but one of the recommendations was making Washington into a two-way street with, um, bike lanes and parallel parking on both sides of the street. While we're not recommending that to go ahead right now, you know, we would do that in the future once that area, um, gets redeveloped. But we would like to see is that area get turned into two-way traffic and a temporary road put in to facilitate the traffic that's going to be using the, um, development as it does come in, into play. So we've come up with a couple of options. Option one is turning it into a two-lane, uh, two-way traffic, but not adding any additional parking. Option two would be turning it into two-way traffic with an additional lane and adding parking on the north side of Washington. And then option three would be to do nothing. I have included a cross-section, which is in the, the last page.
A question on that. Now, the way Washington Street is today, um, there's obviously no parking on Washington Street because of its narrowness. That said, throughout this project, um, the JCPenney ramp is going to remain. Uh, Sears ramp's going to remain and there's a municipal parking lot adjacent to, um, the, um, Gateway Building, um, behind the Palladium, um, behind the federal building, actually. So I, it does seem that we would have no impact to the existing parking. We're not losing any parking, you know? So if we were to go ahead with, um, adding one drive lane to get traffic to flow without all that extra right-of-way for the bike lane and the parking at this time, that should be a cost-effective option, correct?
Correct. Um, the reason why we added the option for parking is that a lot of the businesses has requested additional, um, on-street parking. And then with the, uh, recent measures of allowing, um, 15-minute parking and then, um, the, I forget what they're called, but allowing people to use parking spaces.
Parklets.
To parklets.
Yep, yep.
Um, this is just allows more opportunity for people to park nearby.
What are your thoughts?
I think there was a, a pretty heavy push because what, what's going to happen is when the mall comes down, the north side of Washington Street will remain. Uh, we will expand Washington to the south, uh, make it two-way traffic. Uh, we're still working out some cross-sections on what the total right-of-way width will be and the final design out, but basically what we do is just put, um, asphalt down and then stripe it, uh, for parking and two-way traffic. And, uh, the businesses have, um, said that that would be very helpful, uh, especially during this time to have parking on that street, so. Uh, so we put that together and that, that would be, you know, staff's recommendation is to have that wide and then stripe it for parking as well. And then, you know, we brought it here because parking has to go in, uh, to the ordinance.
On the temporary street, um, you're recommending parking as well?
Yes.
Both sides or just one?
Just on the north.
North, just on the north alongside of Washington Square?
Correct.
Okay. And the difference in price is only $10,000, correct on your report here?
Yes.
And this is just for the temporary.
Correct.
Cause I think we'll bring the full cross-sections back at a later date. We're just looking, looking for approval on the temporary measure.
Right. And we'd be years from a permanent street going in there, right? I mean, all the development would basically be underway or done before we would tear this temporary stuff out, right?
Correct.
Because, I mean, they, with their construction, they could ruin a full, a brand-new street. So temporary is better?
Yes.
Okay. Thoughts from the committee? Deb?
Thank you, Lisa. Um, do, do we know specifically from WAS about their plans? Are they planning to have underground parking in their different buildings so that, you know, some of these spots may end up being replaced as, you know, driveway aprons?
My understanding is that WAS does plan on having some underground parking, but, you know, this roadway would be far enough away from the existing, or from the future development that it's not going to be impacted. This is just, you know, as a temporary measure to bridge the gap while, you know, that development is going on and to facilitate the buildings that are being put into place until the final development when we come back with the, uh, the full plan for this right-of-way.
I have heard public feedback that motorists will appreciate the ability to go both ways there, the entire distance, rather than meet in the middle and everybody turn on third. Um, that's been, I mean, it's worked during the time we've had to have it, but I have received some comment that once the loading dock and the front entrance of the mall and everything else is gone and there's room, people would like to be able to traverse that street in both directions and not have to turn off in the middle head-to-head, so.
Well, and to add on to that, um, something needs to happen because there's going to be a lot of demolition in that area. So there has to be a clean break from where the demoed area is to where the new roadway or where the existing roadway is.
Sure.
So this would also allow us to create a, you know, a clean.
Buffer zone.
Buffer during construction.
Sure. Um, what are your thoughts, Tom?
Uh, my thoughts are, well, uh, first blush, I support this, but, uh, you know, I wonder, for the sake of sort of establishing, um, the status quo that we are looking for in the future, why can't the, the temporary road actually be the same profile as the, you know, ultimate road that we want there, which is with the parking two sides, with the bike lanes, you know, and two-way traffic? So, I mean, what's the difference now between this narrower, uh, uh, temporary to a wider temporary that gives more of a buffer as well? And really establishes sort of like the boundaries and says, yeah, this is what it's going to be. You know, from here over, that's where development happens. From here to the other way, that's street, you know? And have people get used to that traffic pattern. And, I mean, so what's the difference in terms of monies to just go the full width?
We did explore that option. We could explore that option. But as a temporary measure, we thought it'd be, you know, fiscally responsible just to do as little as possible. And then also, um, by adding parking on the south side, um, we wouldn't have any sidewalk over there for people to use to get in and out of their vehicles. You know, there would just be a grass boulevard. And then they'd have to tr- cross Washington without any, you know, real crosswalks or anything. So safety comes into play into that. So right now, we, we only, uh, really looked at these three options.
But we are reserving enough right-of-way to put the full project in when the time comes anyway, right? So we wouldn't, I mean, we'll have the land. We're ready to go when, when the area is ready to go. Um.
Yeah, I think, I think right now, um, those cross-sections are being developed for the actual final, you know, you know, versions of those. So what, really what's going to happen is, is once the mall is down and we determine the width of the right-of-way that's needed, WAS is going to deed over that property.
Okay.
Okay, to the city. And then the city will then take it forward to convert it to right-of-way, you know? So that, um, and so that process. So you're right, Tom. I mean, we don't know the exact amount of right-of-way that we're going to need right now, depending on how that gets developed. Uh, but we do know that once this temporary street goes in, when some of those buildings go up, at least what's proposed, when they dig down to do underground parking and other things, that, that they will more than likely encroach back in and start tearing up that road, you know, in those areas. So just to have that temporary road, knowing it's going to be tore up, you know, we don't, we don't want to. But, um, once we get those cross-sections and stuff put together and that right-of-way, those will come back here. Um, and we're working with tool design right now on those, so.
So option two really is, would get us where you want to go with your parking and the temporary road?
Correct.
Option two. Jim?
How many parking stalls? What will you get with the option?
Anywhere between, um, seven to 15. We.
Does that depend on how long the cars are or what?
No, um, you know, we haven't, um, dove in too far into, um, how the, the street layout is going to go. We wanted to see which option before we spent a whole lot of time.
I like 15 cars. We can get parking for all those people. I'd be, and for that, because that road might be there for a while, even though it's temporary.
Temporary, I mean, I think we should maximize the parking. I mean, obviously get as many as you can get, but, um, whatever it turns out to be, it's better than what's there today. Lou?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would support going with, uh, the option two.
Okay.
Simply because, you know, during this process, our, our businesses downtown are going to be stressed enough. And I think the more parking we can add to promote that, the better.
Especially with people returning more to dine-in too. I mean, there's a number of restaurants down there that are all sharing this area, so it kind of makes sense. Is that a motion, Lou, to, um, approve option two?
Yes, you can make that a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second by Wadensky. Further discussion? Deb?
Thank you, Lisa. Um, I guess, having lived in Chicago back in the eighties, I've been in buildings that overlooked or going shopping where there's lots of, uh, you know, um, going, building down, you know, I don't know if it's three or six stories or whatever, big holes in the ground and doing other construction so that, say on the south side of the street, quite often the sidewalks have, um, all these pipes and plywood because it is a construction zone and they want to make residents safe. So I don't know how the setback would be per se, but I, I don't think our neighbors would care to be kind of seeing some of that per se of having to deal with all the metal cages, uh, kind of like a, um, a tunnel and then plywood on the top so to make sure something from the construction doesn't fall on them. So maybe just, uh, if there's, I'm not sure which plan would be more appropriate, but to go ahead and plan on the additional parking and the widening of the street, but expecting that the sidewalk on the south side could be potentially this construction zone. And I don't think it would be very appealing for residents for wanting to be in that area. Unless they've, you know, been in a bigger city and understand that that's, that's a possible dangerous area.
Yep.
So I just wanted to give you that feedback. Thank you.
So to confine the parking to the north side and the walking for now makes good sense.
Well, I think you could put the, the parking on the south side too, but expect that within the construction process, that sidewalk is going to be a barrier and probably going to have all of these steel pipes and plywood on top just as a safety zone in case anybody was trying to walk there.
Sure.
And so, um, but.
Is this plan?
I just wanted you to give you a heads up on that.
Sure, thanks. This plan though would confine that install to the north side. So we would, okay. So that seems to be the safest approach and also doesn't waste material. So we have a motion on the floor to approve option two with a second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed. That motion carries as well. Item number eight is discussion on possible action on approving the five-year street plan from 2022 to 2026. Um, you'll recall every year, um, when we complete projects, we subtract one year of to-do off of our to-do list for our five-year plan and then we add a few more. It's a cyclical process. But, uh, and every year we take a look at this five-year plan to see what we are proposing to add. And, you know, then we also attach the list, um, which is attached here, our fantastic backlog, that we have been grappling with for a number of years. And so Alan, do you want to walk us through your proposals for?
Sure.
The plan?
So, um, just wanted to note that, you know, 22, 23, 24, 25 stayed the same. Those are the same streets that were.
Those are the same streets that were approved here early, last year. So just adding 26, like Lisa said, I was, one of the comments that Lisa had made, and I think it was agreed upon by this committee, was to look at higher-volume streets that are in need. So what I did is I just looked at the collector streets that were, that are higher-traffic or defined as collectors or arterials throughout the city. And, you know, a lot of those collectors and arterials are the state highway systems through here, like 52 and. So you, we're not gonna reconstruct those, so you knock those off the list and you start looking at the next highest-volume streets that are, that are in poor condition. And two of the candidates that popped out to me are West Randolph from Buick to Merrill and South 11th from Thomas to Fleet. They're both collectors, they're both higher-volume. Obviously, the pavement condition is poor. They both serve both residential and, you know, the commercial. There's Colby and Colby, and then there's.
Marathon Electric.
Marathon Electric, so they're both highly-volume. The utilities are poor, undersized, there's six-inch water mains on both streets, those need to be upgraded. The laterals, the water service laterals are lead, so that would be, make them another good candidate. So that's why, I mean, amongst the, all these streets on here, that these two kinda rose to the top in my mind.
West Randolph was last done in like 1985, and it was quite a project then, but it certainly lived its life with a semi-traffic in both directions, really takes its toll on that one. So, and then the eastern section from First Avenue to Buick, for a number of years after that reconstruction, wasn't only taking Marathon Electric, it was taking, um, concrete trucks from the Hans gravel pit, which now is our property, where the water plant's going in. So, that road's worked hard, Randolph, that certainly makes sense. And, you know, same thing with 11th. Colby and Colby's used that street hard as well. Thoughts from the committee? Go ahead, Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a problem with this list at all, but what I do have a problem is, is how non-aggressively we're really attacking our street problem in this city. I mean, in my neighborhood alone, I look at these five blocks here from some, from 17th to 22nd. You know, the next street over, these, these, these are nothing more but glorified paths. 21st Avenue, I mean, every time it rains, half that block is underwater. The street isn't so disrepair, the south end of the road is almost gravel. You know, and, and, you know, we were talking the other night about, you know, stormwater charges and stuff like that. How can you charge somebody for stormwater when they don't have, when they have all their stormwater sitting in their yard?
Right.
You know, and, and that's why I'd like to see, I'd like to see us come up with some kind of a, it's, it's great that we have all these necessary roads here, but, but all these secondary roads here that, you know, they're just continuing to be neglected year after year after year. And maybe it's time we started tackling a half a dozen of those a year also, thank you.
Thank you. The trouble we have, and we've talked about that, because the city used to, I would say, maybe prior to the Great Recession, in the early 2000s and late 90s, used to do four or five streets a year, not two or three. And they historically, for CIP, because that road's infrastructure's under CIP, they would borrow considerably more and put it towards CIP then. I mean, obviously, we've had some concerns about paying down and mitigating debt. So when we go to do any of these projects, these all get borrowed for. So all these would go in the borrowing for the year that they're listed for. So we certainly could add, add, but there's only two ways to pay for them. We either have to take on debt or raise taxes. And on top of that, the homeowners that live on all these streets get assessed for their percentage, which I can tell you based on feedback I've gotten from Third Avenue, makes some of them pretty unhappy, even though a street reconstruction only comes like once every 30 or 40 years. When it comes around, no one is excited. They love asphalt overlay because it's free, but the assessment part sometimes ruffles some feathers. So, you know, I think we'd have to be sensitive to where we do it.
I can say, I can say one of my, the major concern when I was out campaigning for this office was that people said, fix our streets.
Road construction, see, and I've heard that, too. One hope that we have as a committee, there's a very large infrastructure proposal circulating around in Washington, generating all kinds of buzz, and regardless of, you know, what, what side of that we come down on, if that passes in Congress, we could be infused with a decent amount of infrastructure aid, which would, could really help us gain some ground on some more of these. So that's certainly something that we should keep our eye on. And if that happens, and I think we talked about in our last meeting that our engineers are trying to have a few streets in their pocket, ready to go, if we are able to add capacity. You know, obviously, there's a couple other ones that we could pluck off the list, even if we receive some additional transportation aids this year or next year. We start with what we know we can pay for. But if we find that we have more money than we expected from whatever source, we should be prepared to add a couple more and have them ready without having to start from scratch. So, I think that Alan and TJ have been working on things like that, right? To have a few backup plans?
Yeah, we, we do, especially, you know, Eau Claire Boulevard was ready to go, not ready to go, but it was top one, so I mean, we'll have that. And to be honest with you, we, we're pretty efficient on what we do and we can get streets out there pretty quickly. I just wanted to say that I, we're ready to add streets anytime you guys wanna spend more money. You know, obviously, we drive around every day and you just gotta kinda, to be honest with you, you just gotta close your eyes, not close your eyes, but you're gonna look the other way at some point.
You can't close your eyes, there's too many.
There's a lot of bad streets, but, you know, one, I, and Eric and I were talking about this. It's, it's gonna be a fight to get the three streets for next year that are even on here, because where there's gonna be some other capital projects that are gonna be fighting for this money. And it's, it's gonna have, I hope this committee supports, you know, when it comes to budget time to get, at least get those three streets done, because I think it's gonna come down to cutting some other stuff or cutting these streets. So, there's other, there's gonna be some pretty good other needs coming up that are gonna have to come out of the, the capital budget. That's only at about 2.4 or something like that, so I mean.
The one thing that this will compete with is that new facility at DPW. If we get to a point where we wanna put up a building and borrow for one at DPW, that's a capital project and so is this stuff. And so then we have to figure out what we wanna, what we wanna do. And we may opt to just borrow more. You know, I mean, anytime we borrow more, though, that then increases our debt load. So we've historically tried to only borrow equivalent to the amount of debt that we've repaid for the year. In fact, we've actually borrowed a little less than we've been repaying this last year, which is a plus. But I asked Alan to bring us the map again, cause so often, you know, we've seen this map before, but this map is color-coded and you all have one of these, by the condition of what these streets are. And, you know, you can kinda see, the red is the worst. And then they kinda work their way down the rainbow here. There isn't a whole lot that's green and blue, which is pretty new. But, you know, everything you see that's, you know, red, orange, and yellow, that's our backlog. And so, I think it's important for us to have these maps, I'm glad they brought them, because this is something we can share with neighborhood groups as well, once they get to meet again. I think a lot of neighbors would be interested to see how much work there is to do with the money we have. Jim?
Yes, I like streets also. And I think our citizens need some work on some of these streets. Two days ago, I went out and I drove almost every red street on the map. A couple of them are not gonna make it five years, they're gonna be gravel. They're only short little neighborhood streets, but they're, the plows are gonna take that, rest of that blacktop off and it's gonna be gone. We need to take some time and work on some of these streets that are in red, at least to get them on the list, even though if they're short blocks, take care of them somehow. And it, because I look at this plan of Randolph Street, it's green and orange. And green is fair, orange is poor, and that's only two blocks. So why would we be taking a green street ahead of a yellow or orange street? I mean, unless there's infrastructure that we need to fix underneath.
Well, the ratings are gonna get redone this year again, they're in '21. And I, I just drove it, you know, it's, it's subjective and I think they'll, they'll be orange this year, too, so.
And that's my second comment, is that, you know, I was, when I drive around, I was, went down a router. Routers are one of the red ones.
It's rough.
And they were, hey, the guys are passionate today, great. Probably take it off the list now. And then I drove a couple streets that were rebuilt last year, they're now longer red. So, I would suggest, we as a committee postpone this until we get our new survey information. Is it possible?
Right, well, and we can always amend the map, too. I mean, we're adding to 2026. So if you opt to add the two that Alan recommended, you can pull this plan out for the future years and look adjusted if you want to.
Why add it and adjust it? Let's just not do it until we know what we're doing.
We can, I mean, if we wanna, when do you think the ratings will be out, Alan? Do you think another month?
No.
No.
The end of the year.
Oh, end of the year.
We'll, we'll drive them, we'll drive them, this, they're due, I believe they're due in October to this, to the state. I think some of those red streets were, for instance.
Are we required to have an active five-year plan, though, to get certain aid?
Well, we, we, yeah, we're required.
Like from the MPO and things? Cause if that's the case, we should finish this and then amend it later if we need to.
I don't, I don't believe it's a requirement from the MPO, but it's a, it's, you know, it's a, I think it's, I don't know the city that doesn't have one, basically, it's a planning tool to, to let people look ahead. Now, some of these red streets, you know, we don't have a choice, they're, they're like, we did one block of, was it Jackson Street? I believe we paved between the tracks and 10th. That was really so bad that, even though the underlying utilities are bad, so, we're, we're working with DPW. Some of these streets, we know we can't wait. If they're to the point that we're, we're gonna have to overlay them and just put an inch or two of asphalt on them and try and, try and make them last another five years. Cause you're right, we can't, they're to the point where we can't wait for reconstruction, even though the underlying, the, the thought process was for all these years, not all the, but, you know, don't put a good asphalt overlay over old utilities, which we understand is not. But we're to the point where, even if the utilities aren't that good, some of these streets we have to overlay.
Cause the pavement is just that bad.
Cause the pavement is just that bad.
That's, that's kinda the case, you know, I was just looking at the map, too, and, you know, obviously, one of them, that's red is Crescent Drive. I don't know if you've been up there, but I live up there. And every year, they're digging up water main breaks up there. It's ridiculous how much patch is in that street. But what I'll say, based on the nature of the street, is it runs in a crescent shape, hence the name, between Randolph and Fourth, and there are houses on both sides. Well, that neighborhood has really aged up, and so a lot of those residents are seniors and they're starting to think, you know, when it's time for this street and this whole thing is torn up, how far do we walk with our groceries? How do we get to and from our house when this is a mud hole? And, you know, they're a little bit terrified of the idea of having that be under construction all summer and having to, you know, find a way to get home, park their cars at Jefferson School and find their way home. I mean, so, you know, I think sometimes, even though the streets are bad, when you go out and talk to the neighbors, they're like, oh, it'll wait, it'll keep, you know, put that overlay on there. So, you know, I think that's, you know, Randolph has a fair amount of utility breaks as well. It seems like every winter, they're out there cutting a hole, too. So.
So that's one of the things Eric and I are gonna work with DPW and take care of some of these red streets. I know they have a, Eric's trying to get more money in that budget to allow DPW to have more asphalt money to just put up, not necessarily, well, some patching, cause that, that money they use out of that budget is for the patching, too. But we'd like to do some more street overlays with DPW.
That seems so much better for their plowing as well, cause I think filling potholes, you know, that just, the plow takes that right out versus an overlay where they at least buy a little more time. I mean, even when we needed a couple extra years on Thomas Street, that helped us. Lou?
Thank you once again. I just would like to ask Adam on some updates on, on some streets that we've talked about in the past. And first one would be McIntosh between, what is it, Prospect and the railroad tracks. There was, did they, did the funding come through for that? Is that gonna be built, worked on this year, next year?
Yes, we do have the funding available, we're working on the plans. That should be bid beginning of June, it'll be constructed later this fall.
Okay, thank you. And, and you also had worked, talked about 17th Avenue, you know, like from Sherman up to Elm, you know, that.
Oh, in front of ShopCo and that?
Yeah, in front of the old ShopCo and stuff. Is the funding, how are you coming on the funding for that?
Well, we plan to apply for STP urban funding, which is the 70/30 match now. And that's, if you look at Stewart Avenue from, that's how that's getting rebuilt, from 48th to 72nd. So, I, we plan on putting in for STP urban funding on 17th from Stewart to Elm. And, but, you know, again, that's about a four-to-five-year process, so that application is due in the fall here. It should score really high, to be honest with you, because it's close to the, because of the scoring criteria.
So if we.
It's got high volumes of traffic.
If we get the funding, though, would we add another street to one of these years or swap one out?
No, I mean, it would just, it's, they're, the state pays for 70%. But that's one of the things that I wanted to bring up when I talked about projects that are competing for the funding. Next summer, Sixth Street from Horseshoe Spring Road to Evergreen Road, that's getting overlaid through the DOT. And that was STP urban money, where the DOT's paying 50%. But this, the, I think our share of that is still like 600,000, at a 50/50 match. So, that, it's gonna be a street project, but it's not showing up on our, that'll be one of the capital projects that we'll have to budget for, where we've committed to that money. And also the trail project that we just had that amendment on, that trail project's gonna draw capital, capital money. Those are, those are two projects that'll be, we'll have to fund them, basically, we have a.
We're under contract.
We have an agreement with the state that will fund them. So though, when I said there'd be projects competing, those will be two projects. And the same way, if we do apply for 17th Avenue, I mean, we're trying to get other projects done.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have one more, one more street that we talked about in the past, too. And that is Sherman Street, I think, from 72nd to 44th or 40, you know? You talked about funding for that and possibly starting work on that next year? How is that going?
We don't have anything planned on Sherman Street.
I mean, Sherman, not Sherman, Stewart Avenue. Yeah, Stewart Avenue, not sure.
From, yeah, from 48th to 72nd, that is planned for 2024 construction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Right, and that's, and that's why I said if this infrastructure plan passes and we get an infusion of aid, we certainly could use it. The other thing that we tried to do, though, with this five-year plan, is make sure that we're mixing up, first taking busy streets that people travel often, but then also make sure that we're spreading this help out around town so that, you know, there's not a perception that one district is getting everything or one side of town is getting everything. And so we have a pretty decent mix here between north, south, east, and west. But it's good to take a look at this and just make sure that you guys are happy with what's on here. You know, obviously, with the future years and as we plan, if there's some critical failure or some surprise that comes up that we didn't plan for, we can adjust. But it's good to make sure that we know kind of where we're heading. So with that, did you want us to act to approve 2026, Alan, and then amend if we need to? Do you need this done tonight?
Yeah, I think we do, because we're, we have to have our five-year capital budget turned in early June.
Okay.
And so, you know, the one thing with the five-year list, I mean, we're already working on 22 projects right now. We were spending time on them. We will be walking into the 23 projects, you know? Obviously, like Eau Claire Boulevard, that's on for 24, we've pretty much already got that laid out and ready. You know, kinda, when, when you take a look at years four and five, they're a little more flexible because typically we're not that, but we're typically, you know, at least a couple of years ahead on setting control and doing engineering and stuff. So, trying to make those changes, you know, for the early part of the schedule makes it difficult for us. And, and once these streets get on this list and they get approved by you, typically what we do is we back off on maintenance, you know, knowing that they're gonna be reconstructed. And so, they just kinda get a little bit lower on the priority as far as, you know, patching and things like that, you know? So, if, if we do approve these, you know, when having that list, I mean, there's other implications to that when you start making these changes. Same thing with the utilities and the budgets on the utilities, we budget out five years on that, too. So, and we've tried to plan for the lead services with the grant funding and everything we're getting, too. So, yeah, so that's, that's, it's really important for us to have a five-year list that we can really somewhat rely on.
Well, in 20, the 2024 list, the District One streets, those were actually next for the 2020 budget, right? They were ready to go then. And we had to pull them for CIP because we ran out of money. And then last year, we pulled them because we wanted to mix up the help. So, so that's, that's pretty much done. Jim?
Yeah, I'm okay with the staff's recommendation on the five-year plan with the way they have it. Cause we know we can change it if we have to, and it's probably gonna be pushed back anyway, but I really appreciate the staff working on projects where we can get extra funding and extra money from other agencies and put our money into something that's gonna get shared revenue and get it done that way, that's really great, the staff looks after us for that way.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Is that a motion to approve adding those two for 26? Okay, so we have a motion by Wadenski and a second by Neil. Lou? Oh, okay. Deb, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Lisa. I was just gonna mention, too, and it may be something on a different map per se, but that I know back when Director Mark Quark was here, that we ended up having in the middle of winter, 25 below, some streets that the sewer was replaced where they cleaned it and then put in a vinyl, something. and then put in a vinyl, uh, something.
Slip liner?
Liner on it. And so that, I know there are some, you know, from Elm going up on Seventh Avenue, um, and I would think there is some in, in other places, uh, and maybe that can be pursued as well in other areas as a kind of a quick fix type of thing. I was also gonna mention, too, that I think, uh, in, in hearing about the Water Commission, that with the timetable we have is, is it a hundred or a hundred and fifty lead laterals done a year?
About a hundred.
A hundred? That you're estimating it may be ninety years before we complete all the lead lateral, the lead in the streets replacement.
That's correct.
So we are hoping, I think, with some of this federal dollar, to be able to really cut in and work on some of this, but, you know, we're, we're gonna need to maybe do the overlays in some areas until we can afford to get to it. Now, I think in the past, Alan has mentioned that there is some community development funding that is in certain low-income neighborhoods, maybe for a block of two. So instead of taking the, the higher cost per share for residents, there might be some type of an offset, Alan? Is that what I recall?
Are you talking about block grant? Help with block grants?
For block grants, for the road construction.
Or all of it sometimes.
Right, so this year, it's getting used on McIntosh, that one block of McIntosh. That's where we're using CDGB money. That's funding that entire wall, not the sewer and the water, but it's, it's funding that one block of McIntosh, which.
So that it will be more helpful to some of those families that live in that, instead of getting a higher bill if they're, uh.
They won't be getting any special assessments.
Oh, that is great.
We used to use it, we used to reduce it from like forty-two to fifteen.
Okay.
Um, but the, with this year, when, even in the last year, we just, uh, there is no assessment to the low to moderate income in those areas.
Is there something, um, if this federal dollars come in where we're gonna be targeting those that are lower income, is there a way we could also use that as a, a cost off share or a lot less cost? If we do get these federal dollars to work on some of these streets that would be in lower income areas? Or is that something the city would have to discuss or allow an exception with these, with these federal dollars, if it happens?
I think it's still unclear what we can use that money for. From what I understand, we're not gonna be able to use it for infrastructure.
On the, on the rescue plan funds, that's true, but if we get, let's just say they pass that infrastructure plan.
Yeah, there might be some money out of the infrastructure.
Yes, some of the chatter going around in Washington, they wanna nationwide replace a hundred percent of lead laterals. So, you know, that takes an awful lot of money to do it in fifty states, and it's a pretty expensive plan. So I would love to see our allotment for that, because, you know, if we can offer that to everyone without having to pay even a share, that, that's a magic bullet for lead laterals, really, if we can get that, so.
Whatever money we get, we will spend.
Guaranteed, right?
In a good way. We'll fix roads and fix laterals.
That's right, that's right, but it's all stuff people appreciate.
We're, we're prepared to go.
Good. Any, any other comments on the twenty-twenty-six additions for those two? We have a motion we have to vote on yet. If not, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None are opposed, so those two get added. And then item number nine is discussion on options for pedestrian crossing improvements at Twelfth Avenue and Stewart Avenue. And, you know, we've talked in the past, um, because there's some pretty concerned citizens in our neighborhoods and parents, uh, whose kids are attending John Muir, um, that would like to see some safe crossing things there. And so we'd asked Alan to look for some options for us, um, that, you know, didn't involve a two-mile-long walking bridge or something, um, that we could do. And I, I know we have to engage the DOT in some of these discussions as well, probably, because this is, you know, partly theirs, right?
So, um, I did look at a few options here. Um, I just want to note that I, Core did pull up the crash data for this, which I thank him for that. There was, uh, since two thousand and eleven, which is obviously ten years, there was, um, one pedestrian incident. It was actually on the north leg on Twelfth Avenue. And there was one incident, um, on Stewart Avenue. So there was the two incidents in ten years, minor incidents. So, um, I just wanted to, to put that background in there, that there haven't been any fatalities or, or obviously, there was just a, a few small incidents. But I, so I, I did, uh, look at the intersection, obviously, and there is, uh, right now, the way it operates, and some of you may know and some of you may not, is when the crossing guards get there in the morning and in the afternoon, the, the lights are manually flipped on in the shed. So the overhead lights flash and the yellow, and they flash constantly, and the yellows flash on the fifteen mile per hour sign. And those remain flashing the entire time that the, when the crossing guards leave, they shut the lights off and they leave. So that's the way it operates now. Um, I did, I mean, I drove in this several times in the morning just to see it, and I did stop out the other morning and talk to the crossing guards, just to get their perspective on it. And, uh, you know, they weren't dissatisfied with the existing system. They said, you know, some, most people obey it, and most people are curious, but, and, uh, they hadn't had any close calls lately, but, uh, they felt some improvements could be made, just was, was a sentiment to this committee. So I looked at a couple of alternatives. One of the alternatives, I think, was mentioned here, was the RRFBs, the Rapid Response Flashing Beacons. And the first picture, kind of, I don't know how clearly you can tell that, but there are the RRFBs on the pedestrian signs down below. And at that time, I was, I was still investigating, but those RRFBs can be put on the, on the tops, on the overheads. So the first picture you see would have the Rapid Response Flashing Beacons on the outsides on the pedestrians, and then it would be the, on the center and on the outside, plus on the overheads. So it would be quite, I, to me, it would be pretty striking when you hit it. So that's one option, and with that option, um, we looked at installing push buttons so that not only would it operate, um, when the crossing guards were there, but it would also operate at a time of affair, a time when.
So pedestrian could actuate it, too, then?
A pedestrian would actuate at any time of the day, any time. But we also have the option, we looked at the option, because, uh, when we do put those RRFBs in, push by pedestrian, they're gonna have to be timed, we're gonna have to time it. But yet, when the crossing guards are there, they may need more time, so you don't want them running back to the intersection and trying to hit a button. So we'd have a manual, they would have a, there's technology out there, they would just have a manual switch. So if they're looking across somebody, they would hit the remote, the lights would flash, they would get their pedestrians across, they could hit the remote.
And stop it.
And the lights would go off. So that would be a, an added, an added feature. So that's option one. I did, uh, talk to a vendor, and they, they looked at adding all the RRFBs and the push buttons. And with our staff, our electrical staff doing it, it would be about a fifteen thousand dollar for equipment upgrade. And then we would have those push buttons, we'd have everything for about fifteen thousand in equipment. The second option, and just, just to finish off that option, I did speak with the DOT on that. It would not require, um, any permits or anything from the DOT. It would just require me to send them an email saying we're doing it, so they document where they are. So it really would be minimal, minimal involvement with the DOT. The second is the Hawk system. This is an example, smaller picture, but hopefully you can get the. The way that works is there would be a push button on the side, and when somebody would hit it, the lights would start to flash yellow, and then they would flash red, and then it'd be all red. And at the all red, it would be a stop condition for the cars. It would be, I don't know that there's, I think there's one up in Monacoa, the DOT told me. I haven't, I mean, I've been through Monacoa, but I haven't noticed it. But I don't know if there's any in the local area, so it would be a training, to train the residents that they need to stop there. It would require a permit from the DNR, uh, excuse me, the DNR, the DOT. We'd have to do a traffic study to warrant it. I don't know exactly what those warrants are, but she seemed, the traffic engineer I talked to, DOT, seemed to think with the amount of traffic pedestrians there, we would meet those warrants. You would have to sign an agreement with the DOT to, um, put them up and maintain them. So it's not that, it's just one more step to get, um, because it's actually a signal, there's a controller with it. So it's, it's quite the elaborate system. Existing arms would not support it, so we'd have to put up new bases and new arms. The DOT, um, the last one they put up with engineering design exceptions, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, for the whole system.
With that stop condition there happening, you know, intermittently, when people approach the intersection or when there's, you know, school going on and off, does that create a terrible bottleneck for the commuting public at Seventeenth and Stewart at all?
I don't think any worse than it would now, because, you know, they have to stop now when a crossing guard goes across. And I think the, the, uh, I don't think it would eliminate, to be honest with you, the, um, during the peak times, I think you'd still need a crossing guard there. Not other community, I watched videos of other communities that put that in. They still kept the crossing guards there during peak hours with, uh, children. I think during off-hours, it would provide, you know, people going to the park or whatever, it would provide them a safer, you know, like, I'd have to be a stop condition. I just, I'm a little bit concerned about training the public on how these work. I think it would have been educational.
Do we have, um, an indication from the crossing guards when you networked with them? Do we have a problem with people obeying that fifteen mile an hour speed limit during school time?
Uh, not for the most part.
Okay.
They said it's very rare, it's.
Once in a while, I notice you'll be going through there and somebody whips around you, but it doesn't seem to be as often. I know at one point, I was actually coming down here from that side to a meeting, and I, um, noticed, shortly after school was getting out over at John Muir, that there was quite a few police cars lined up in Marathon Park, and as people would come roaring through there and speeding, they were pulling them over, one at a time, taking turns, and they had three of them pulled over in rapid succession in front of Marathon Park, and I thought, that's perfect, get the word out. But, you know, if we don't have a widespread problem with not obeying that speed limit, I think that's, that's a significant plus for us.
So I guess I'd be looking for some direction. I think, my personal opinion is I'd like to try the RRFBs. I think they would be, they're very effective. I mean, it's pretty striking. I think now, with the yellow flashing all the time, I think people maybe become a little bit.
Used to it.
Used to it. It's there every morning, you know, but once those RRFBs flash on and there's eight of them strobing at you, I think it's gonna bring pretty good attention, especially with the overhead.
That crosswalk was recently painted, right? I mean, we've got good paint on there?
There's good paint there, yes. So, and I guess, you know, the fifteen thousand still might be a stretch out of this year's budget, but I think it would be, it could be a line item in next year's budget if we can't come up with it this year.
Jim, your comment, and then Tom.
Yeah, I, I perceive that it's similar to Five Hundred Grand Avenue, where the pedestrian hits a switch and the yellow lights go on. And that's a great system, because they're not on all the time, they're not flashing when nobody's there, they're flashing when someone is using the crosswalk. Where Stewart Avenue, more often than not, you're driving past those yellow flashing lights, crossing guards are standing there with no kids around, and people are getting used to those lights just traveling through. So if we change it to a remote system with the crossing guard or a pedestrian button, and they're only flashing when people are using it, that's gonna, those people, when they, they're gonna get used to that.
They know there's something to pay attention.
They're gonna say, there's something going on, I gotta slow down here.
Right.
That's a great system. I think we should support that, and hopefully the city can find funding for that.
I, I agree. Tom?
Right, yeah, sure. I, I was just gonna say what Jim said. I mean, I, I like the on-demand aspect of it. You know, when there's not guards present, it'd be a very effective deterrent.
Okay. Um, right now, um, there's, um, they weren't looking for a formal recommendation for us at this point. So I guess, do you guys want to continue to play out this research a little bit? And, or do you want us to approve the RRFBs, and you can then find the funding and the time?
Well, I guess at the time, I didn't, I didn't know I'd have all the information together and all the money. I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't real confident that I'd be able to get, I'll pull that together, but I was able to get the numbers. So I'm, I'm confident now with my, you know, a recommendation or moving ahead with the RRFBs, so.
Why don't we take a motion to approve option one, if the committee is good with that?
So move.
Option by Wadenski, second by Ryan. Further discussion? Deb, go ahead.
I had read something recently, Alan, about, um, some crosswalks and some legal suit that of not having that kind of beeping for those that are visually impaired to knowing when crossing. So is that something we could add as a potential to this crosswalk?
Didn't we put those in at First and Scott? For the blind, they would have blind, blind resident at the landmark?
Yeah, that's, that's my only concern, is it's not stop-controlled. So if you tell the blind person to cross, you're still.
Oh, that's true.
There's no stop control, you know? That's, that'd be one advantage with the Hawk. If you, if it was a stop control, you could have telling the blind pedestrian to cross, but.
Probably don't want it without a Hawk then, though.
Correct. I don't think we can add those without a stop control.
Okay, I, I guess I, I, a number of residents on Stewart Avenue were concerned that, even though they have the view of Marathon Park, and it's my favorite park, that they just feel like they're taking their life in their hands trying to cross with a stroller and a dog and a parent, uh, or with bicycles. And I think this would solve a major problem for any type of activity, but especially with a fair week in, in helping in that area. And I guess I, I'm all for that, and, um, I'm hoping to start maybe neighborhood meetings again, meeting again, and maybe we can have Alan talk more about it as an option.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I guess in just this recent information, um, I think other municipalities in Wisconsin are getting sued by not having this, the beeper crossing for the visually impaired, and we do have a large population of that.
Why don't we try this, try this beacon first? And if it shows us that we find out in a, in a while that we need a Hawk, we can certainly come back and talk about that at some point. I mean, it's complicated and expensive, but no one said we can't ever talk about this again. So, um, let's try this, because we've got a motion, a motion and a second for option one. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed. That motion carries. Item number ten is future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they know at this time they want to talk about next month? Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, I, I guess I wrote you a little bit on this, uh, Madam Chair. I'd like to hear from the engineering department on how they're coming along with their plans for the, uh, future, uh, Public Works Department building and such. You know, I, I took Eric out and, you know, showed him the Peterbilt shop and stuff, and that. I'd like to, I'd like to hear some ideas, what he's come up with, what they're looking at.
We can talk about that. Um, one thing that is coming on the horizon, I think, is going to be a joint meeting of this committee and finance to hear the report from that fleet study. Because, you know, with the new facility for DPW, the first job was to figure out what size facility they need first and what the appropriate size fleet is to have, and then how many people you need to run it. And so before, and, and part of that study asked that consultant to review the design that Eric had from Bariantos and see if it was actually the right design or if it needed to be adjusted. And so that report is about ready to go. I think Mary Ann's got a draft. And so when that is ready to go, the plan was to bring our two committees together that make these capital decisions, us and finance, and hear that report, and then we can, um, know a little more about what direction to go.
That's fine, but I think I'd, I'd like to hear it from, just from this committee first, you know?
Sure.
So this committee has a heads up.
Okay, let's put a little recap of that.
Before it goes to finance and stuff, so, so we kind of have a heads up what's going on.
Right. We won't have the Mercury Report, but we can certainly have an internal report, if you're good with that?
Yes, thank you. I'll put that together.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll have that for June. Anything else? Tom?
Uh, yeah, I'd be interested, even just some preliminary conceptuals on, uh, the extension of Third Street, you know, at the mall footprint.
Yeah.
Start looking at, uh, what are our options there, both aesthetic and, you know, practical and all that. So it'd be a good thing, and it'd be nice to have that starting to, to bubble up, because, you know, developers like to know what they might be looking forward to.
Third, well, Third, Second, and Jackson, right? I mean, that all is getting kind of a confluence there, so if we could see an early sketch of that, it would probably be helpful. Deb?
Thank you, Lisa. Um, also, I was going to mention about, um, do we have a list together about the different options of overlays so that we can let our neighbors know what might be happening?
As far as who's getting overlay?
Yes.
That would be important. Can we get that list, so we can, you communicated out to neighborhood groups, which streets are getting overlay this year? Then people can kind of be ready and know that they need alternative parking for a couple of days?
The CIP money is going down right now on Merrill and Randolph, if you guys have been up there by the tech.
Yes, yep.
And then also on Buick.
Okay.
Those are the two that are gonna get overlaid within the next week. So that's where the two fifty went for, two hundred fifty thousand went for the, from the CIP.
For this year, okay.
Well, that's, but then, obviously, the, um, we're talking DPW money to overlay some of these red streets. That's what you'd be looking for, what.
Sure.
That's what we could provide.
Okay, perfect. Anything else for June? Tom?
Maybe last thing. Uh, I'll throw a snake in the room. Uh, we'll have, uh, probably have a feeding frenzy if we have this, but I, I'd like to see some sort of, uh, you know, during the, the hot patch season, uh, you know, plans for, you know, I, I've been in contact. I have a couple of, uh, streets in my, uh, district that are just, you know, pothole city, and, and I just imagine some poor bicyclist going head over, you know, teakettle.
Right.
At night or whatever. So if we could have an ongoing sort of feel, uh, you know, where we can say, yeah, what about this stretch? What about that one? And get a feel for how we're gonna proceed with, uh, the hot patch for those potholes.
We have, we have the milling machine right now from last year at DPW, so they can do larger patches? Like cut out a larger section on their own?
Yeah, so we, we, we bought a. Yeah, so we bought a larger planer and stuff, you know, to kind of open some things up, you know, where we need. But I think, maybe, maybe what I could do is, you know, bring Dustin in to kind of talk about how we, you know, you know, how we kind of work through the city, you know, like with the patch truck or with, you know, and stuff like that. So, and then, because I get calls frequently, emails frequently, you know, you know, how come they're not up here in the, you know, in this section while they're working down here, we're working that way, you know, and stuff. And so, so, yeah, I'd be happy to put something together, Tom.
That would be good. And the committee should meet Dustin anyway, because Rick retired, and we haven't met him here yet, so bring him along. And...
Yep.
They should know him, because then when we have questions about everything from snow plowing and road salt to potholes, then he's our guy. So, I think we'd enjoy meeting Dustin next month for anyone who hasn't met him. Anything else for June? Okay. If anything comes up, you guys know where to find me. That's the end of our agenda, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion from Larson, is there a second? Second from Neil. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one ever is. All right, we'll stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.